For them, Helen might be here a little late, but they asked me to get the meeting started on their behalf. So I called the meeting to order and we'll do some roll call.
Dudley and Prada.
Here.
Dudley and Prada is present. Niva Hassanin. Niva Hassanin is absent. Jamie Hoffman.
Here.
Jamie Hoffman's present. Andy Meford.
Here.
Andy Meford's present. Michael Houlihan.
Here.
Michael Houlihan's present. Stephanie Potts.
Here.
Stephanie Potts is present. Vince Caristo. Vince Caristo's absent. Peter Benson.
Here.
Peter Benson's present. Helen Jenkins. Helen Jenkins is absent. John Newman. John Newman is absent. Jason Rice.
Here.
Jason Rice is present. Mr. Chair, there are six members and one alternate president. Would you like to appoint the county alternate as a regular voting member tonight?
Yes, I would.
Thank you.
So if you guys could take a look through the minutes and I'll entertain a motion for approval or any amendments.
Yeah, I just had one comment on page 10. It just, I had mentioned something about covenants that I looked at, Granite County. And the purpose of that comment was to encourage, if possible, Missoula and City/County planning to get involved in future covenants for future developments, if possible, so they could look, look at what might happen to that land, since we had such a big discussion on that with the covenants. So that was, that was really the purpose of that.
Would you like a specific amendment or?
A specific amendment would, the purpose of the, the purpose of the comment was to encourage Missoula County and City planning to get involved in the development of future covenants, if possible.
Okay. Got that?
I can amend that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or suggestions or entertain a motion?
I move that we accept the minutes as amended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So the minutes pass. Are there any public comments on items not on our agenda? Any staff comments, other than what we're about to hear about in our public hearing? Don't see anybody out there, so I will turn it over for a presentation from Casey.
Sorry, I was just trying to get the screen to go up there. I don't know. Oh. It's, uh, huh. Yeah. May have been easier than I thought.
So Casey Drayton here with Missoula County Community and Planning Services to present the Mill Creek Meadows subdivision final plat adjustment request. This is a request from WGM Group to amend the filed final plat for the Mill Creek Meadows. Mill Creek Meadows subdivision is located near Frenchtown off Mill Creek Meadows Road, shown on the screen, outlined in red with a little black star there, just to the east of Frenchtown off Mill Creek Road. This is before you tonight, on March 19th. This will also be going to the county commissioners for the final decision on April 4th, 2019. So as mentioned, Mill Creek Meadows subdivision off Mill Creek Road, showing on the screen here. Shelby Renee Lane is your primary access into the subdivision. This is a fairly recent subdivision. If you go out there, most of the lots are still vacant. There's a few homes that have popped up recently in the subdivision. Most of the infrastructure for the subdivision is put in. There's a few outstanding improvements, agreements, for a few of the, the small improvements left to be done in the subdivision that are likely to be completed in the spring. The secondary access for the subdivision is off Romulus Lane, just at Mill Creek Road to the north a little bit, which would then connect to Tolleson Way. We also have Tyson Way, which is a primary road through the subdivision as well. So shown here on the screen is the plat that was recorded last year for the subdivision. The subdivision was originally approved with four phases. All four of those phases were filed on the same final plat, so they all came in at the same time and they're all showing here for us. So the original Mill Creek Meadows subdivision was approved by the Board of County Commissioners on December 17th, 2008, subject to 25 conditions of approval and four phases. The final plat deadlines for those phases were extended on several occasions. The final plat package was then received at county planning. I guess it would have been about early last summer. We worked with WGM Group to get through the conditions of approval and make sure everything was there. The final plat was then recorded on August 8th, 2018. And what we have here today in front of us is a request for an adjustment to that plat that was recorded. Their request today is to remove the easement area and subsequently, any improvements that would have been located within the extension of Shelby Renee Lane. As mentioned, Shelby Renee Lane was the main road that comes in off Mill Creek Road. Then it currently terminates at Tyson Way. There was originally proposed to be an extension of Shelby Renee Lane, which would have terminated until such time as there may have been a future connection by adjacent property owners. The easement is for access as well as utilities. And highlighted on this shot here just shows you in relation to the subdivision as a whole, the highlighted yellow area is what they're proposing to remove. Adjustments to filed final plats are reviewed in accordance with Missoula County subdivision regulations, section 6.6.4, for the criteria, showing up on the screen in front of you. Any adjustment to a major subdivision final plat does need to come before Planning Board, as well as then the Board of County Commissioners. So in the staff report that you have in front of you, staff has gone through and made findings, as well as conclusions, in relation to this requested adjustment. Staff has found and concluded that these changes are of a minor nature, when viewed in the context of the subdivision and existing infrastructure. Compliance with the subdivision regulations has been considered and the adjustment will not cause a compliance issue with Missoula County subdivision regulations. Protections originally considered for Mill Creek Meadows subdivision and surrounding land will not be altered. The removal of the easement will not create any new impacts or increase a mitigated impact on the neighboring land. Through connections to adjacent property will remain in two locations. The request is consistent with the original findings from the subdivision in relation to the Missoula County growth policy. The proposed adjustment is not necessarily consistent with all of the original findings of fact found in the original Mill Creek Meadows staff report. Staff's made the recommendation that these findings and conclusions included in the staff report and read here tonight be adopted as part of the original subdivision approval record, to amend it to show that this subdivision will comply with all of the necessary criteria. The subdivision regulations basically speak to the fact that any changes after the fact need to comply with the original findings. If they don't, there's essentially new findings put in place to reflect those changes. So that's what staff is recommending, that these findings here in relation to this request specifically be carried forward. The changes are not proposed to be incremental. This one adjustment, staff does not see leading to a series of subsequent adjustments. Each of those would have to be considered as their own request at a future date if they were to come forth. Changes have not occurred to the subdivided area. The Mill Creek Meadows, the boundaries of the subdivision, the exterior boundaries of all those lots will remain the same, as well as the lot configuration. It won't change any property lines. What it's doing is lifting off an easement, which would overlay the property lines. And economic changes were not considered as a part of the request. The applicant has requested this, essentially because this short leg of road would be, not be beneficial to serve the Mill Creek Meadows subdivision directly. It was originally contemplated as potentially offering access to the adjacent property, which would be located to the south. The property owner of that property to the south has included a signed affidavit with the application acknowledging the release of that easement area. The applicant has indicated that development on this property to the south is somewhat unlikely at this point in time due to numerous easement restrictions that encumber it. If anyone was to develop it, they would still be left with two potential points of access. Those points of access would be reviewed in full at time of a subdivision request on the property to the south. Those two points of access would be Tolleson Way, showing at the southern portion of Mill Creek Meadows, as well as potentially Romulus Lane showing up to the north. Now, the legal and physical access components of both of those, like I said, would be reviewed at a later date if anyone was to bring forward development on that property. And that property owner has acknowledged that they are planning to remove this one section of the easement there. There were also, in the application, you'll see that there was originally contemplation of placing a house across the property lines without actually aggregating the property. They were just going to develop across both of them. That is no longer the case. Missoula County Planning has received plans for that original house plan to be on lots 28 and 29, as opposed to 29 and 30. So those circumstances have changed a little bit and Jeff will confirm that here for you on behalf of the applicant. This request was sent out for notice and comment. It was sent out for agency notice to select agencies. Comments received from the Missoula City/County Health Department noted that there wouldn't be any substantial changes to the sanitation review based on this requested change, so they didn't foresee any issues with it. Missoula County Public Works also noted that there would still be two access points left for that potential property to the south, should it ever be developed, or at least just for that property owner to personally access. The applicant has included statements from utility providers acknowledging the release of the easement area. As I mentioned, it is a utility easement as well as access. And adjacent property owners within 300 feet of the subdivision and any property owners who've bought lots within the subdivision were notified via certified mail of this request and offered the opportunity to comment on it or partake. We gave them the meeting details for the meeting here tonight, as well as the Board of County Commissioners' public hearing. We did receive one written comment, which is included as attachment C to the staff report. That's going to be the very last page of the staff report, from the Martellows. They had a few basic questions here in relation to the Romulus Lane access, which again is that one up to the north, where my cursor is highlighting right now. What they were looking for was how, they indicated phase two of the Mill Creek Meadows subdivision was going to be accessed. Phase two has already been platted, along with phase one, phase three, and phase four. So my thinking is that they were really referencing the development, which is located down to the south of Mill Creek Meadows. And again, we would say that the access would be reviewed in full at time of subdivision. However, they would still have two potential access points, one off Romulus and one off Tolleson. They also made some comments in regard to what road maintenance and legal access would look like along Romulus. I know there was some discrepancy at time of the final plat, some middle for Mill Creek Meadows, and the Missoula County Attorney's Office reviewed it and found that Mill Creek Meadows had sufficient legal access to utilize Romulus Lane. There has not been a review for any form of future or rumored or proposed development on anything to the south. So we can't speak to really what, what it would take to have legal access down there. It would ultimately be up to that property owner, who has acknowledged the fact that this easement area is being released, that he would need to figure out at that point in time, or whoever subsequently buys it, what their legal access is going to look like. So there's, there still is viability there, where it's not cutting it off entirely, it's not landlocking it. So with that, staff has recommended approval of the plat adjustment based on the findings of facts in the staff report here tonight, as well as the conclusions of law. I'm happy to take any questions you have. Thank you.
Would the applicant like to say a couple words about this? Applicant's agent?
Jeff Smith with WGM Group, representing the applicant. First wanted to thank Casey and the Planning Board tonight for the opportunity to discuss this request. So the request before you this evening, these are maybe not as nice as Casey's graphics, but I think they'll get the point across, as you'll see. The request before you this evening is to remove this portion of Shelby Renee Lane. It's an access easement, and as, as we'll discuss here, it's superfluous currently and is not well-suited to provide a meaningful, meaningful purpose in the future either. As Casey discussed, Mill Creek Meadows is a 39-lot neighborhood. Then the Frenchtown Activity Circle accessed off of the Frontage Road and then Mill Creek Road. Primary access to the subdivision is off of Shelby Renee here. Secondary access is provided by Romulus Lane. Now, with respect to the comment that was received, I think it's important to, to note the role that Romulus plays in access to the Mill Creek Meadows neighborhood. For any, any purpose other than traveling north on Mill Creek Road, which is not a common movement, there aren't a lot of uses or folks up that way. Any use other than traveling to the north, using Romulus Lane as an access point is, is out of direction. It adds time and distance to your commute. There aren't any lots that front Romulus. This, this area here is a drain field easement that serves the neighbors just to the north, and this area is a riparian buffer. So this, this access serves as, serves as an emergency access point. Also worth noting in, in that consideration, the mailbox for, for the Mill Creek Meadows neighborhood sits here, along the, along the primary access point. So if you're traveling to or from, from Mill Creek Meadows, you're, you're traveling along this main access road. Mill Creek Meadows is connected to Romulus to provide an emergen, emergency secondary access, in case of an accident or a fire, a situation where, where a secondary access point's required. The utility that this secondary access point provides for the folks on Romulus is worth noting as well. So they now have a pedestrian access and a, and a, and a road access that provides them with secondary access out of their neighborhood also. Been several fires in the neighborhood, the Black Cat Fire comes to mind. Casey reviewed the, reviewed the easement they're requesting for release. It connects to a downstream portion of property owned by Fred Desha. Downstream property currently has a road connection along Tolleson Way. This is constructed to the property line. Fred's built a gate and a, and a road connection to that, to that point. Fred also has, has access along Romulus Lane to his home. When Fred sold the property to the north of Romulus Lane, he reserved, he reserved an access easement along this route to his house and his agricultural use. And when he sold the piece of property that was developed as, as the Mill Creek Meadows neighborhood, he reserved access along the Tolleson Way route to that, to that piece of property to the south. Fred and his family used this piece of property for agricultural purposes. They intend to, intend to continue that use into the future. Fred's a party to the request and he signed the acknowledgement that's in that staff report packet. Worth noting here for consideration, the soils on this property are, are of agricultural soils of local importance. So the intent of this exhibit is to provide some context to this request. This light orange area is the primary and replacement drain field area for the community drain field that serves Mill Creek Meadows. This blue area is a storm drainage easement that serves, serves the purposes of routing runoff from Mill Creek Meadows and storing, storing runoff as it discharges. These brown squares are agricultural buildings. This here is Fred's house. This gray area is the, is the extension of Romulus Lane to the site. Easy to see as you consider a connection of Shelby Renee Lane onto this piece of property, that it, he run into that primary drain, or the replacement drain field area in those agricultural buildings pretty quickly. And the ability for it to provide a meaningful connection to any long-range development of that property is, is limited at best. So future development of that property, as Casey mentioned, served by this connection to Tolleson Way. Also in the packet is a, is a letter from, from the applicant's attorney addressing this, the legal status of that access along Romulus Lane and providing an opinion, opinion regarding that access. For, for consideration, that attorney is the same attorney that worked on the, the legal access question for Mill Creek Meadows, to, to the county attorney's satisfaction. This agricultural access satisfies Fred's needs now, and in the foreseeable future for he and his family. The Romulus Lane connection provides a potential for a future emergency secondary point of access, egress from the, from the site if this, if this were to be developed. As Casey mentioned, when this request was originally submitted, there was a plan to construct a home on these two lots. Just to clarify for the record, that, that plan has changed. The applicant is considering constructing that home on two, two other lots within the, within the subdivision. So for the reasons and limitations that we've described, portion of Shelby Renee in question doesn't serve a meaning, meaningful purpose now, and is very limited for use in the future. It's superfluous and unnecessary to support, to support future development, and given that the downstream property owners are party to the request, I'm pretty comfortable with it. Thanks for the time. Look forward to answering any questions.
Thanks, Jeff. Is there any members of the public who wish to speak to this request? All right. Not seeing anybody lining up. So I guess at this point, if there's any Planning Board members who have any questions for Casey or Jeff, fire away. Oh, we got one.
I guess I have one question. When do, just out of curiosity, when, has construction started on this? It has. Okay.
The, the roads in the subdivision were constructed prior to filing of the final plat. I believe there are four homes that are occupied there now, and I think, I can't speak to the number of permits that are in, but I would imagine there's six or seven homes that'll be constructed this year.
Okay. Thanks.
I have a question. Maybe this is for Casey. Casey, with the current zoning, the parcel to the south, how many, how many homes potentially could be on that, could be built on that property?
The property to the south is unzoned. The land use recommendations established in the comp plan here, we have two what could be almost considered conflicting. We would have sort of a open and resource type use, originally lying there, and then over top of that with the 2002 Land Use Guide, was the Frenchtown Activity Center, which describes that any development in the Frenchtown area should go in this location, within the Activity Circle. But, you know, ultimately, that you'd have to kind of weigh what the proposal is against both of those. Generally, that Activity Center, in recent times, has been sort of trumping what you see underneath. It is a little more recent, it has a little more context to it, so if, if there's property, developable property within the Activity Center, I think it goes to say that it could sport up to two dwelling units per acre. But then you're going to have to, you know, pencil out what it would look like in terms of well and septic, and, you know, with the current limitations there of an existing drain field and replacement drain field, it might be pretty challenging.
Yeah, the reason I bring it up, I mean, this, this does seem pretty minor, but in general, having more connectivity in neighborhoods has been shown to improve traffic safety, particularly for people walking. And so, something like this, where, you know, if it was a larger development that was potentially going to, you know, reduce the number of access points to one and funnel the entire neighborhood onto Tolleson Way, I think would be, you know, maybe a different story, but the magnitude as it is, doesn't really seem concerning.
Any comments, questions, or a motion?
I could take a stab at one. I didn't see a motion in here.
Here, here.
Well, kind of, kind of. So I'll give this a whirl. I move the Missoula City/County Planning Board to approve the plat adjustment for the Mill Creek subdivision, based on the findings of facts and conclusions of law on the staff report.
Well done. Is there a second?
I'll second.
By Michael. Any comments or conversation about the motion on the floor? All right. All those in favor? Aye. All those against? Thank you. Good presentations. So now we have some communications and special presentations from Erin.
My name's Erin Pahan. I'm with the Office of Housing and Community Development with the City of Missoula. And I thank you for inviting me here today to talk to you a little bit about our housing policy process. Tonight, I will be able to provide you a general process update and let you know how we have embarked on the development of housing policy. And in about a month, we will be releasing a draft of that housing policy to the community and presenting that to city council, after which time we'll be able to really talk about the specifics and would enjoy the opportunity to come back before this body again and talk about those specific policy recommendations as well. So just to provide a little context and background, over the past decade, increases in home rental and home purchase prices have made it challenging for working Missoulians to afford homes. To address this growing concern, in December of last year, the Department of Housing and Community Development launched the first phase in our housing policy work, which was the formation of a housing policy steering committee. Mayor Ingham invited a diverse group of citizen stakeholders to guide the city of Missoula in developing broad-based strategies that would address both housing supply and housing attainability across the community. So this group of community leaders met repeatedly in 2018 and throughout early 2019. The resulting recommendations encompass broad-based strategies that the Housing Policy Steering Committee believes the city should pursue in addressing our housing issues. The steering committee membership reflected the diversity of our overall community, with representatives from various financial institutions, the University of Montana, city and county staff officials, elected officials, public and private developers, realtors, land trust advocates in our nonprofit development community, and our local unions. As a group, our first task was to research the issue. We spent several months reviewing and dissecting national research, local demographics and needs assessments, while also ensuring the group had a good baseline understanding of our local code and our growth policy. This was a thoughtful process with robust discussion. The factors that lead to a constrained housing market are often complex. Rental prices continue to increase, but wages for low and middle-income households have not. This has forced more families to spend large portions of their annual income on housing, leaving less money for needs such as childcare, food, healthcare, and other needs. We know today that 69% of Missoula renters earning less than $35,000 per year are cost burden, meaning they pay more than 30% of their income on rent. This means in Missoula, a single renter earning less than $17 an hour is struggling to pay their rent. Tightened standards for mortgage loans and high home prices have made it impossible for many people to buy homes, causing more people in our community to remain renters, further clogging and creating low vacancy rates among our rental market. A household today must earn over $70,000 to purchase a median-priced home at $270,000. We know that number continues We know that number continues to rise and today is closer to 300. The current median family income in Missoula is $66,000. This means our public school teachers, social workers, young professionals, city and county employees, and service sector workers are struggling to purchase homes. To make sure that people can get decent housing at a reasonable price that they can afford, the City of Missoula, in collaboration with Missoula County, knew that we needed to take some action. Housing affects all of us. It intersects with almost every other social issue and outcome, from education and health to employment and public safety. It also has a direct impact on our economic health as a community. You'll often hear people say that homes are simply where jobs sleep at night. These intersections are reflected in our housing policy vision. They highlight the key role that safe, secure housing plays in early childhood success in a thriving local economy, in individual and community health, and in social mobility, providing people the opportunity to improve their circumstances and thrive. So, in the fall of 2018, our office moved into phase two of housing policy work. This phase was defined by the creation of technical work groups, which were charged with distilling the broad-based recommendations from the Housing Policy Steering Committee into specific policy recommendations. The technical working groups are comprised of key staff members across various departments within the city and the county to ensure we have the expertise we need at the table. These groups also relied heavily on expertise in the private sector, either through group membership, by private sector individuals serving as key resources, or through participation in one of many focus groups that we held. The private sector served to ground truth our recommendations, ensuring that the eventual policy would have both an impact on housing affordability and housing attainability and supply in the market. The Housing Policy Steering Committee has remained involved in the process and has been providing us feedback as we move along. We also have elected leaders serving on a leadership team. Those include leaders from both the city and the county and leadership-level staff, making sure that our eventual recommendations are in alignment with guiding policies like the growth plan, thereby improving our outcomes. The five working groups established included funding and revenue, regulation and code, public education and outreach, innovation and capacity building, and preserving and creating true affordable housing. So, to format this update, I'll move through each of our five technical working group categories, sharing the broad-based strategies that were, each group was charged with by the Housing Policy Steering Committee, and then addressing the membership of each group so you can get a sense of the individuals that participated in crafting those policy recommendations. We'll start with public education and outreach. Most communities are missing the opportunity to change the narrative about why housing matters, why housing is a shared public concern, and what needs to be done to fix this problem. As a community, we define what matters to us based on our values, so this is a vital part in the process. Additionally, through our work in housing, in the Housing Policy Steering Committee and through our interviews with stakeholders, especially those within the development community, we learned the impact that state-level policies are having on our local housing supply. While there's a great deal that we can accomplish locally, we need to address barriers at the state level to make positive momentum. The recommendations in this area were to explore strategies and messaging for affordable housing, community education, and advocacy across the community. The group also recommended that we form a strategy for advocacy, an advocacy effort on a statewide level to address policies that are impacting housing development. To tackle this work, we needed deep expertise in communication, outreach, and engagement, so we enlisted the support of the city and the county's communication teams. We also reached out to partners in the private and nonprofit sectors who work on community organizing, messaging, and public education, including our partners at the Missoula Organization of Realtors and the Missoula Economic Partnership. Our focus was really to identify high-opportunity, high-impact outreach and engagement. How can we reach the most citizens and how can we acknowledge and reduce barriers for everyday Missoulians to participate in community-driven policy development? It was really important to us to acknowledge that housing is something that touches everybody in our community, and so we wanted to have as many voices involved in this policy creation as possible. That means we needed to reduce some of the traditional barriers to city-driven policy development. Oftentimes, folks can't make it to open houses, they can't come to evening events due to childcare or working retail or service sector jobs or transportation issues. And so, it was really important to us to define a process that allowed us to go to people in the community at times that worked for them. Our resulting plan focuses on outreach activities that occur both prior to the release of public policy and after the release of public policy. Prior to the release, we've been focusing on stakeholder meetings. Our, our primary focus is to gather targeted and specific feedback from individuals and organizations that are working in fields impacted by housing policy changes. So, that includes our social service sector, our affordable housing developers, our private developers. We held series of stakeholder meetings, focus groups with our land use consultant, neighborhood leadership team meetings, and then social service sector focus group listening sessions. Post-policy release, our focus will be on reaching out to the community to gather reactions to the plan and to gather thoughts and concerns. This includes community open houses, and lastly includes neighborhood canvassing. Again, we wanted to go to those neighborhoods where we know folks have barriers to engagement, so we'll be doing canvassing in the South Gate Triangle area and the North Side, West Side, and in central Missoula with the goal of knocking on 50 doors in each area to get a sense of how folks are prioritizing housing policy areas and how they're experiencing housing in the community. So, as mentioned, housing affects our entire community, so it was important to us that, that we have a wide swath of representation in our outreach as well. I think this value is reflected in the outreach we've done to date. We've held 26 stakeholder meetings with individuals across all sectors. We've held four listening sessions with service providers and community members and an additional four focus groups with the development community. We've reached out to all 18 neighborhood leadership council teams and attended 12 neighborhood meetings to present on housing policy. And so far, we've reached 25 households and counting through our canvassing efforts. So, before this policy was even developed, we reached out to 355 community members to make sure they had a voice in that process. So, moving on to regulation and code, the regulatory environment is a critical factor impacting housing attainability. When land use code is not aligned with a community's goals around growth, it has the ability to impede the development of homes. When land use code is in alignment, well-designed policies promote new approaches to developing homes and leverage existing resources. The recommendations in this area are to create affordable housing development incentives, to explore ways to promote ADU construction, to increase coordination between the city and the county in response to affordable housing needs, to plan for targeted infrastructure development, and lastly, to promote infill and town home development. Our focus here was again to look at the, both the regulatory and programmatic barriers and the creation of all housing types at all price points across Missoula. These recommendations are technical in nature, so we relied heavily on city and county staff who hold expertise in zoning and planning, working in collaboration with our land use consultant. We also relied heavily on the private sector to ground truth our recommendations, ensuring they'll actually move the needle in relation to both development feasibility and affordability. Moving on to preserving and creating true affordable housing, continuing to develop true affordable housing will require strategic public-private partnerships and public investment. When we talk about true affordable housing, we're typically talking about income qualifying housing that is either deed-restricted or held in affordability permanently through another mechanism like a financing tool. So, this is affordable housing that our community can rely on for decades to come. One of the most important ways to ease affordable housing constraints is to ensure that existing affordable housing is also preserved. Preservation can mean many different things depending on the type of housing being considered and can include rehabilitation of existing home, land trusts that acquire and preserve affordable housing long-term, and strategies to preserve mobile home parks across our community. So, the recommendations in this area are to develop agreed-upon definitions for affordable housing, so we're all working from the same standard, to better leverage low-income housing tax credits, which bring private investment into our state to build multifamily or rental housing, and to develop affordable housing preservation programs to make sure that we aren't just treading water by building new units and then losing units on the back end, so we're preserving the affordable housing our community has already invested in. So, our focus in this group is to address again that true income qualifying affordable housing, typically designed to serve both renters and homeowners with incomes below 80% of area median income. This group relied heavily on the expertise of our nonprofit development community, but also reached out to private developers in the finance sector and including bond counsel when analyzing various tools to fund affordable housing development and preservation. Moving on to innovation and capacity building, to address growing needs in our community, we need to work to expand the capacity of our existing service providers and our development community while simultaneously identifying gaps that can be addressed through new service models. A critical step is to have a very clearly defined understanding of our housing needs as well as data-driven benchmarks for annual housing production goals to impact those needs. The recommendations in this area are to collaborate to expand capacity, really focus on those public-private partnerships, to work with local partners to expand approaches to housing development, grow programs of our nonprofit providers, and increase construction capacity across the community, to convene diverse public-private working, or diverse public-private sector working group to implement housing policy and program goals, and to clearly define an assessment framework and data tracking. This last one is of specific importance to us because we really want this housing policy to be accountable to the community. We want to have clear benchmarks and clear goals going in so that we can assess on an annual basis the progress that we're making, and if we're not seeing the progress that we want to see in any given area, we're positioned to pivot and to attempt something new. This group relies heavily on expertise within the city and the private sector and focuses on the alignment of goals in housing, transportation, and energy conservation. And as I noted, this goal is, is charged with really creating that robust assessment process to ensure accountability in our goals and our anticipated outcome. And so, we also relied heavily on folks from the finance sector, from the private development community, and our partners in transportation and, and in energy conservation. All right. Moving into our last group, funding and revenue. The most effective approaches in addressing community housing needs require some level of direct public sector investment. Identifying new sources and revenue streams is never easy. However, nationwide, public investment in affordable housing activities leverage extremely high returns, as high as 12 to 1 returns. A funding mechanism like this is also critical for incentivizing the private sector to meet the gaps in, in housing production at various affordable levels. The recommendations in this area are to create a housing trust fund and explore options to both capitalize the fund and identify recurring local funding sources. Additionally, we recommend examining ways to better leverage tax increment financing to support housing goals. This group relied heavily on city finance staff, folks from MRA and development services, and then our private sector partners in the community development finance institution world, as well as bond counsel. And then lastly, this process has been, again, overseen by that oversight and leadership committee that includes elected officials and leadership from both the city and the county. It was important to us to make sure again that, that these recommendations align with guiding policies that have already been adopted in the city and the county so we can have maximum impact. This group will continue to meet throughout this process and throughout the implementation of this plan to make sure that we're following the vision and the overall intent of the So, beginning this month, we'll be moving into phase three of our housing policy work. Phase three is largely defined by that public process, which was previously outlined. We had hoped to have draft policy released last month, but we decided to slow down and extend our timeline so we could engage in those canvassing efforts and a public process that was more robust and inclusive than the standard city public process. There is tremendous urgency around this work, but we're deeply committed to getting it right, and, and we feel like having that inclusive process will help ensure that we do that. So, with that, I would love to answer any questions that you guys may have.
I got one. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I have a question. How's your fundraising been? I mean, what, do you have any, do you have goals and do you have any success so far?
Yeah. That's a great question. And so, so we will have goals around what we feel like investment needs to be to meet certain benchmarks. A great example is, you know, we, we will be presenting an incentive framework that would incentivize development of housing at different price points. And to incentivize that, we hope to be able to offer a suite of tools or subsidies to developers to assist them in, in meeting those price points. And so, we'll know if we want to develop 50 single-family homes at a specific price point, what we would need to be able to incentivize or subsidize to help a private developer meet that price point. And so, when we present policy recommendations to city council in April, we'll be able to assign some numbers to our goals and say, if, if we want to achieve this outcome, we're going to need an investment in this area. Where that investment comes from, I think, could be diverse. It could be private investment, it could be some type of social impact bond, it could be a voter-approved initiative, it, it could be a variety of sources. And so, I think that is a larger conversation that the community really needs to have is, is how do we, how do we see ourselves investing in our, in our housing goals? So, that investment structure won't be a recommendation that we're making, but we will be making a recommendation to convene a group of individuals to start having that conversation.
Dudley?
Yeah, it's kind of the same. I had a question about using the TIF, or tax increment financing. I understand how it works for commercial development and, so I'm just, could you elaborate how that might be used for, for hous, I could see how it could be used for an apartment complex, but what about housing? How, could you elaborate on that at all?
Yeah, so tax increment financing can generally be used for off-site infrastructure costs or improvements that lie in the public right-of-way. And so, that's often used as it applies to multifamily projects right now. And so, Homeward's a great example of investments in tax increment financing, either through helping buy down the cost of acquisition of land or through supporting infrastructure improvements or infrastructure costs in the public right-of-way. It could theoretically be used, and has actually been used in that same manner for single-family housing development through town home exemption projects or subdivision projects. Scott Street Villages is another great example of how tax increment financing has supported the construction of, of housing that has come in either at workforce affordability levels or at a more subsidized, permanent affordability level like a Homeward project. And so, we have seen that deployed for both multifamily and single-family housing very effectively in Missoula. And so, we're recommending that we just strategize a little bit more around that and think about how we can stretch that investment.
You may recall, I attended some of those meetings, and some of the recommendations I made to those present at those meetings weren't well-received. As an architect who was, who spent 35 years working in the affordable housing field in this community, I feel I know well the consequences and the effects of zoning and subdivision regulations. When Dick Ainsworth was here on our board, Jason and Andy and I and Dick all agreed that it's absolutely arbitrary that we can't build homes on slopes over 25%. There's no reason for that. There's no justification for that. That could change. It's not going to, as far as I know. In the early aughts, a lot of affordable, truly affordable housing, owner-occupied housing was created through the design liberties found in planned neighborhood clusters. I brought up that, the fact that those liberties have been eliminated from our zoning regulations and the response from city staff and, and the mayor's And the response from city staff and the mayor's office was that they were very controversial projects, and so they didn't want to engage the public in something that was going to be so politically difficult. What were those liberties? Really rather minor things. Interior in a development, in a PNC development, interior setbacks, there weren't any. You had to observe setbacks to adjacent properties, but not within the development. You could cut in half the front and rear yard setbacks. There were no minimum lot sizes required. What we did was, we'd have three, four, five lots, we'd rearrange the lot lines and create small houses and small lots for sale. Those liberties aren't present in chapter 20 in our current zoning book. And my suggestion that they ought to be because they were so successful despite the fact that they were controversial. I think it's really unfortunate that we don't have those design liberties to do what we once did and did very well. Some of those liberties that were found in the PNC regulations, we got them back when the state adopted townhome exempt regulations. But then the city imposed a limit on them. If you have proposed more than 10 townhomes, and even in a development, then you had to go before an arbitrary and capricious process before city council, just like you went through, just like a subdivision, and you didn't know what was going to result from that. So you are put at risk, and developers don't want to do that. So we haven't seen a lot of townhome exempt developments in this community. Why 10? Why can't it be 20? There's no changes there that I'm aware of in those regulations as we go through this process. Those suggestions were not well-received by the participants of those meetings. So there's things that can be done, but they're -- and it's low-hanging fruit. It'd be easy to do administratively, legislatively, politically. It just doesn't seem to want to happen. And I really think that's regretful because I found it to be highly advantageous to the production of affordable housing in this community, and they're gone. Why?
Andy?
I guess this is a good time for me to follow up because I echo many of those same things. One of the questions I had for clarification is, you always hear this term "affordable." Is your definition of affordable 30% of gross income?
Yeah, so generally, there's a lot of ways to approach affordability, but generally we think about affordability as 30% of gross income regardless of income.
Okay, so the other section I want to just kind of, three areas to hit on. The other one, it feels like, and it kind of is a follow-up and a continuation of Jamie's comment about this regulation and code section. The regulations don't get easier. The city creates more checklists that take a lot of time and money. We are up to a scroll of checklists to do anything in this community anymore. Those adds time, money, complexity. We continue to adopt design excellence and just mound the regulations on, and every time that mounds up, it adds to that cost. There's this, seems to be this concept of, it doesn't add that much. I hear this on this board when it comes up, and some of these people think that it's not that much more. It all compounds pretty significantly. And so I think this regulation and code, it seems it's light in here to me. When I look at the participants, maybe there's private in here, but I don't see group members in private even highlighted. I see city and staff. And I think there's a much lack of private influence in this regulation and code section. And, which kind of comes back to, it's also a little disappointing. I don't see that in the overship and leadership, oversight and leadership group, a lack of private influence.
Yeah. Yeah, and I can speak to that some. So we did have lots of private involvement, folks that had the opportunity to read our draft recommendations in full. Jason was one of those and held focus groups with 20 private developers at all scales, small, medium, and large. And all those developers had the opportunity, again, to read our draft recommendations in full and to provide specific comment on that. And we did make significant edits to our regulation and code recommendations based on those comments. We didn't name those private developers individually. In several instances, we were asked by those private developers not to name them individually. And so that's why we took that approach of just listing them as stakeholders and as focus group participants. And as it applies to the oversight and leadership, that is primarily elected officials and city and county leadership staff. That is more an internal working group. But we did really try to have private representation at all levels of the technical working group. Our housing policy steering committee, which is really the driving body behind the vision and the guiding principles for housing policy, had developers at all levels on that. David Edgell, Jean Mostad, Jamie Hoffman served on that group. We had architects and engineers on that group, our local unions on that group. That was actually 100% private sector-driven. We didn't have any city staff members serving in a voting capacity, although we did staff that committee. So it has been really important to us to have that representation. We've tried to really focus on that. But I think we're really hoping to, those that we haven't reached or haven't heard from through this policy development process, that we'll be able to reach them and hear from them during the outreach when our draft policy is released. And that policy will be just that, a draft, and we'll be taking feedback and incorporating that into a final policy as well.
So I guess we can stay tuned to see what this draft looks like and see if these kind of comments have been heard. And then we'll have an opportunity to make comments at that time.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Erin, I just want to thank you for your time tonight. I really appreciate the update. I appreciate all the work that you guys have put into coordinating this, and I look forward to seeing what the policy is. I also just want to commend your efforts to do canvassing and to reach out to people at levels and at a time that works for them. I think that that's really important, to make sure that the folks who are most impacted by housing prices are getting their voices heard as part of the process. And I think it takes that extra effort to go out in there and make it happen. So thanks for doing that. And I guess my other, just something that has come up sometimes at our planning board is when we talk about townhome development, and a question that I still have, and I think it's good that we're approaching it from a perspective of what is affordable. In, I've been curious, because we've sometimes have talked about, well, we build townhouses. How do we know that they're then affordable to someone? And I've just been starting to look, and it's totally unscientific in my own searching on Zillow and things like that, but I'm always surprised by the fact that oftentimes it seems like townhouses are as expensive, or if not more expensive, than some of the single-family homes going in neighborhoods. And so I'm sure there's a lot of reasons behind that. I would like to know more. I wonder about the impact of policy and regulations and other things on that. And so I look forward to hearing from this and to learning more throughout this process. But that's a question I always have, and I'm excited that we're starting to tackle that as a community.
Yeah, thank you. And we are, we're excited to talk about that more. And both Andy and Jason and Jamie and others are all right. The regulation adds real cost. And so that is a focus of our recommendations in regulation and code, to remove unnecessary regulation that does increase cost. And then to try to determine how we can incentivize affordability. And we are looking at a couple of different levels to figure out how we can incentivize affordability in the workforce realm with maybe a shallower incentive, where those units can comment at a lower price point, to really hit folks in our market who make between, you know, maybe 90 and 120% of area median income. Folks who could buy a home if a home existed at that price in our market today, but we're seeing those homes kind of escape our market. To give you a sense, a family of four who makes 120% of area median income, which is kind of the top end of that level, can afford a home around the $300,000 price range. So we still have those homes today, but unless we take some action, we won't have those homes in the close foreseeable future. And then we're looking at, you know, if deep, when we apply a deeper incentive or a deeper subsidy, we, a deeper investment of, you know, public dollars or taxpayer dollars, we want to see those homes held in affordability and perpetuity. And so those may be deed-restricted, or they may sit on a community land trust, which will ensure that those homes, once that first home buyer moves out of them, don't flip and immediately move up to market rate. And as a community, we lose our investment. And so we're looking at different ways to kind of both incentivize the market by reducing unnecessary regulatory barriers and providing some infrastructure support, and then how we can address a more targeted population that the market typically won't touch.
Erin, I'm interested in that last point of, and what you said before about maintaining and keeping the low-income housing that we have in the city, mobile homes, old single homes, where when they get to a state of disrepair, the owner wants, rightfully so, to remove, you know, raise it and build something else. What can the city and the county do about that? I mean, what, we're faced, we get faced with questions of, you know, will you change the zoning on this property so we can make apartments where there used to be mobile homes?
Yeah. So there are some fantastic tools out there that can support the preservation of mobile home parks. And mobile home parks play a very important role in the continuum of affordable housing. For a lot of members in our community, especially those who are making around 60 to 80% of area median income, which for a family of four is, you know, can be about $40,000 or $50,000 annually, it's the last opportunity for affordable homeownership. And so it does play a really important role. There are a couple of organizations nationwide, luckily, one right here in our community, who have a very specialized product to preserve mobile home parks. It's called a resident-owned community. And NeighborWorks Montana supports resident-owned community conversions. And essentially, it's a tool, it's a financial tool that allows the current mobile home park owners to purchase the land underneath their mobile homes from the mobile home park owner, and to turn it into a housing cooperative, allowing them to remain in their mobile home and usually paying no more than what they would be paying for lot rent anyways, but having that money go back to pay off permanent financing that allows them to own that land in a cooperative. It provides stability to the mobile homeowners by stabilizing their housing costs, and it allows them to invest in their mobile home and invest in the community and run it together as a cooperative. It's a very effective model. We have two or three rock conversions that have occurred in Missoula in the last several years. But NeighborWorks needs support, and they need, they need resources to engage in that model. Those resources can be small. Sometimes it's a loan guarantee from the city or the county. Sometimes it's helping them get preferential credit pricing or credit scoring on their, to allow them to get more flexible financing terms. And so there are some very simple things that we can do to help the nonprofit sector be more effective in preserving mobile home parks. As it applies to single-family homeownership, sometimes it's as small as a $5,000 to $10,000 homeowner rehab loan that can allow that homeowner to put on a new roof or maintain that property. And so each individual solution has to be a bit tailored to the market and tailored to the home type that you're trying to preserve. But we've been able to effectively preserve affordable housing at a smaller scale in Missoula, as it applies to mobile homes with resident-owned community conversions, as it applies to affordable housing multifamily projects by helping to purchase them before affordability requirements expire and keep them in affordability. And as it applies to single-family housing, we haven't figured out how to do that at scale. And so our goals in those areas are figuring out how we can help our nonprofit partners build capacity, and how we can shore them up and help them scale that product out.
Do you have any questions? Dudley?
Yeah, I got, I just have last comment. I think the points Jamie made were very good. And the other thing, it's kind of a drastic example, but as we develop our parks and we have more open space, and then we have Destination Missoula, and we're courting businesses to come in, all that drives up housing prices, whether, you know, so it'd be that good if the council or these, you know, people had that discussion. I know it's, you know, it's a hard road to travel down. I don't know if you guys saw it. This drastic example was the cities that were courting Amazon. In Fairfax, Virginia, you know, God, housing went up 28% after they brought that business in. So it's just, it's just those things. The nicer we make it, then it drives up housing. So it's just, it's a hard one, but needs to be discussed.
I'll throw a couple of comments out there as well. I agree. Thank you for, you know, the work that you're doing. It's important to me for us running a business where we hire engineers. They can't afford houses here either. And so, you know, that kind of rang true to me. But all that being said, you know, I'm fourth-generation Missoulian, and so our family has seen a lot around here. And you take a look at, you know, what has happened over the years. My mom also was a Realtor, and she didn't get to be a Realtor during the 80s because there wasn't houses selling. And so, you know, you look at the past, and you see where things are going. And I think I've made these comments before, but I think it's also good to put them on the record. When there's low inventory and there's fewer homes being created, you're going to tend, as a builder and a developer, to go towards the high end because they work on a markup basis. So when there are fewer homes to build, then you are going to try to get into the upper-level limit because you're going to, and there's few, it's hard to employ people here, too. That's another issue. So if you're going to build fewer homes a year and you want to increase your livelihood, you're going to try to build a $350,000 house because 10% of 350 is more than 10% of 150. So that's kind of the reality of it. And once you saturate that market in the upper level, it'll start to kind of come down. So when you look at the, you know, I believe, I was on the Making Missoula Home with MOR, and I believe those recommendations are to find housing throughout the market, not just in the affordable. And you'll start to drive things down. You see the transfer of homeowners. You see somebody move from their $250,000 house to a $350,000 house, and then the market starts to correct. Now, it's hard to do, and it's long-term, but it's more sustainable. And I would agree that the other comment I'm going to make is, you know, back to the PNC thing, because we were involved in those in the early days. My actual parents did a couple of those. And it really comes down to a little bit of leadership when it comes to, you know, not in my backyard. And so the outreach will be extremely important because our current community responds very strongly to community concerns. So if an affordable or attainable project is proposed in a neighborhood and people are very concerned, I think you're going to see it very difficult. And that's all across the board. As risk increases, time increases, fewer people want to do something in the housing market, and therefore the prices are going to go up. If I'm going to be in a process for six months, I'm going to expect to make a higher profit because the chances of it being denied were too high to accept a lower amount. As, I'm not a developer, by the way. I think I, people say that I am all the time, but I've never developed myself. So just so people know that. We just represent them, and I was around the real estate, you know, my entire life growing up. So I think those are the biggest things I see, is that, you know, if we're focusing towards ownership, the other piece would be is that, I agree that the townhouses have not been going for, you know, the affordable range. It does start to get more into the attainable, in the middle range, which then starts to open things up. I think condominiums may be a direction that have to be pursued further, and then financing gets difficult. So the funding platform that can start a project off and get the funding in place for your first few units is going to be critical. And if we can find a creative funding source to get the first few units sold, then you get owner-occupied, and you can start making your ratios that the bankers want, and then they can start getting conventional financing. So we have to find some creative, either angel investors or something like that that can do owner financing. I mean, honestly, I've got projects and clients, I'm telling, find a way to finance your first few units and let's start doing condos instead, because they're going to be quicker, and we're going to hit the market. And right now, that's the other piece, cost fluctuations, you know, from year to year. It's, projects will live and die if they get delayed by two months. I mean, we're seeing it right now in the commercial industry. They, I mean, we saw some of it go on hold because we got delayed, you know, they got delayed too far, and the pricing was too, you know, scary for them. And so, you know, you got to look at things like that. So, so all that being said, I think it's doing a great job. You know, one of the things that I think will be tough for you is the competing interests. Our community is a beautiful place to live, and I think you're going to continue to see, just like you said, you know, higher-paying jobs. But I do think that's the other component which is important, is getting higher-paying jobs actually then starts to bring the housing, I think a little bit of both is important. If we get higher-paid people, then all of a sudden our percents of median become closer to the housing cost, but we got to do both. It's out of whack right now. So I don't think I had a question with that. So it's just a statement.
It was a good one.
Thank you.
I have a question. Thanks, Erin. I have a question about a couple of things that we see here in the planning board. The first one would be parking requirements. Did you guys look at that as part of the regulation and code section? I'm just curious to hear your thoughts.
Yeah, so we, we did spend quite a bit of time talking about parking, and we plan to make recommendations for parking grant actions, both as they apply to incentive-based development and as a general land use consideration, especially as it applies to infill development. I think there are several places that we are really focusing through housing policy on trying to align our current code with the goals that we have clearly stated in the growth policy. So really incentivizing and supporting true infill development, which means we have to look at things like parking. We have to look at things like compact development, and so figuring out how we can, how we can bring that code in alignment with those stated goals.
That's great. So with regards to infill development, I'm curious if you, to what degree in this process you looked at the combination of housing and transportation costs that a family or person has to, has to, has to take on? I mean, housing seems to get cheaper as you move further out from this community in most communities in the United States, but people pay more for transportation. If they, the farther they drive, if they don't have access to transit, are not able to walk with their kids to school or whatnot. And nationally, on the average, at least as a few years ago, the average family budget was made up, 20% was made up of transportation costs. It's a tricky subject. I'm curious how you guys handled that.
Yeah, we, you know, we did look at that from a couple, a couple of different angles. We don't have good local data on that, which, which makes it difficult. But the myth of, you know, drive till you can afford is easily disproven when you look at the transportation costs and what that adds to an average family's budget. Housing in places like Stevensville or Lolo quickly becomes just as expensive, if, as, if not more expensive than housing in, in the urban core. And so that, it is something that we're focusing on and we're trying to address through recommendations, but it's nothing that we were really able to quantify based on the information that's available to us.
That kind of gets to my last question, just this basic question about the scope of the project. It sounds like you were looking at the entire county. Is, is that true? Or was, was there defined boundaries to, you know, where this plan will apply or the areas that you looked at?
So the, the recommendations that will be presented to City Council next month will be recommendations. So all of those recommendations will have to be facilitated during, or through various processes like Title 20 or Title 12 amendments, the creation of draft policy or ordinance through our office, through Development Services. And so in that, in that sense, we're really focusing on where the city maintains authority in those policy recommendations. And so looking at kind of the distinct city limit boundary for that. However, we did heavily involve the county throughout our working groups and in our leadership team because we also know that we really, we really can't talk about housing development without talking about the urban fringe and how that's impacting our, our housing development patterns within the city of Missoula and how that will be impacted through annexation. And so I would say we're definitely not looking at the full county, but I think we're looking at kind of the urban service area or the urban fringe in addition to the, the discrete city borders and talking about how, how policies will impact projects as they annex into the city.
I do have kind of more of a question. I feel like I should do the answer, but I'm going to just get cleared. Are you guys focusing more towards ownership side of things, or is it also rent? I mean, I know there's, there's some talks in here about tax increment, or not tax, um, tax credit development. And so I'm just kind of curious what your kind of mix is, are you, what your goals are going to be as towards ownership versus rent?
Yeah, I would say that we're addressing both equally in, in the policy. And so we're really looking at diversity of housing types across the scale, from an ADU all, all the way up to a subdivision, from a duplex all the way up to, you know, a 200-unit multifamily building at all affordability levels.
And the regulations definitely need some overhaul. You've been copied on some projects. There's, you can build stuff that you can't subdivide, so then the financing gets tricky, which doesn't make sense. Like, the two should align. You know, we're in a sophisticated community. Our zoning should be progressive, and you shouldn't even need subdivision review, in my opinion. I think the zoning should handle your growth needs on their own without a subdivision review process. So, I mean, that's just kind of my opinion that, you know, and I've kind of commented on that before, so.
I have another basic question, Erin. I'm interested to hear your take, something that's, on something that I've thought about for a while. The fact that 30% is, used as the metric for affordability for homes, do you take into account, or nationally, or in this project, the fact that like, for a middle or lower-income person, the remaining 70% is much less and maybe not adequate to meet their other needs?
That, that definitely comes into play. It becomes a really complex equation because, for example, for a young family who is making well below what we would consider area median income or enough money to comfortably live, given housing costs, the remaining 70% of their income may have to cover childcare. It may have to cover food and healthcare. That family also may be eligible for childcare assistance, though, or food stamps, or medical assistance through Medicaid. And so it gets really, it gets really complicated balancing what those costs are. There's actually a push nationally, and it's gaining some traction with the Department of Housing and Urban Development to increase that metric to 40 or 45% of area median income being considered affordable to reflect what is more realistically happening today. I think that's very dangerous to, to start to call out or assign a normalcy to that level of cost burden because the rest of our expenses aren't going to decrease accordingly. If anything, we're seeing considerable increases in the cost of childcare and the cost of healthcare that, again, aren't addressed through rising wages in our community. And in Montana, that is the, the ugly opposite side of the coin, is that we are routinely on top lists for housing inflation or lack of housing affordability nationwide, often in the top 10. And it's not because our housing prices are so outrageous. $300,000 for a median-priced home is high for Missoula, but it's not high for the nation. It's because our wages are so outrageously low. And so those two things in combination, I think, are what have created this very tight market and this very difficult situation for Missoulians. And so the, the cost of living is a factor that we constantly look at, but really trying to suss out who is more cost burdened behind the simple ratios is really complicated.
I think, what do we compete with, like Boulder, San Diego, San Francisco, and Seattle for those ratios where their cost of housing is atrocious? I mean, you know, and so, yeah, that's just kind of a scary fact. And so that's why, you know, I kind of said, you know, getting some of these telecommuting type jobs in town will just slowly bring the whole tide into, into, into alignment. But it's, it's both sides of it.
Erin, did you, I assume you guys are considering like tiny homes or that kind of thing that's going on a little bit, too? That's in the equation?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Erin, was there, did you look at all, at people on fixed income who are, have difficulty staying in homes that they live in as, as property values rise and their, their property tax bill? It's a, it's, I felt for a while, there's got to be a solution there, maybe at the state level. It's a problem that's very clear and obvious. It seems unfair. And that's part one. Part two, I'm curious if in general, you found that property taxes in Missoula, obviously they've gone, they continue to go up, and people feel like they're high. But I've lived at several different places in the country, and I've always been curious if they're actually high compared to other places.
Yeah, so that's a great question. One thing that we discovered through our housing policy work and our stakeholder interviews is, in a lot of instances, property tax relief being one of them, it's less of an issue of the creation of a program and more of an issue of educating people to what already exists. And one of our recommendations will be to create kind of a one-stop shop or a clearing house where folks, folks can go and learn about all the resources available to them. So the state of Montana already has significant tax, property tax relief for folks who earn below certain incomes or on fixed income for elderly individuals. And it's just not something that a lot of folks are informed about. And so making sure people know that those avenues are available to them. We, we do hear property taxes are an issue. We are not hearing that people are being taxed out of their homes. Not to say that that's not happening. That's not something that we're consistently hearing about. But we are hearing that people feel like property taxes are impacting their quality of life and their ability to, to do some of the things that they would like to do. We do look, we do look at our property tax rates in comparison to sister cities in our region and in our state. And you're right, when you compare them nationally or even regionally, we do have quite low property taxes. They are higher than what people are used to them being in, in prior years, though. And I think that's where some of that feedback's coming from. I do think it's having a very real impact on people. But, but our property rates remain relatively low when we compare them to our region.
All right. Thank you for your time, Erin.
Thank you, guys. We'll look forward to, to coming back and, and talking more when we have more released. Thanks.
Sounds good.
Okay, so committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Excellent. Any old business, new business and referrals? I thought Dudley was going to get his PowerPoint fired, fired up there for a second.
Comments from members?
All right.
I'll just say, I was surprised, I guess I shouldn't have been surprised to see that the last meeting went to almost 11 o'clock again.
The one before I was 11, too.
Yeah, right. I think it's great that we, we put so much attention, particularly at the land use map. I mean, it's an important project, and I think we did our due diligence, so, thanks, everybody.
All right, we're adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.